In this meeting of the South Burlington School Board, pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This room is in search of another location where they don't want to come to the board meeting, but must be something else.
All right, welcome to this work session. I was going to call it a retreat, but it's not like that. Do we have any comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda?
We do have one change right now, and that is that two five is not quite ready. John reports out that it's ninety-five percent there. So I do think we'll be fine with a lot of the other things that we have on there. So two five is not on there tonight.
Okay, so we'll have to move that.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll move to Wednesday.
Are we going to get it before Wednesday?
Yeah.
All right. And did we get, oh, we won't have questions till Wednesday either.
Right, right.
All right, so we will move to Agenda Item Three and consider a possible resolution for legislature regarding school funding. And just for the board's information, I did receive a call from Channel Twenty-Two who was interested in some additional detail on this, so there may be some follow-up coverage on that from Channel Twenty-Two. And we have a revised copy, correct?
Mm-hmm. That's your place. We think that's the one that reflects the most recent changes.
Yeah, this is.
Maybe you have to help maybe.
This is, yeah.
David, do you want to have Martin kind of?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate. You've got it.
Okay. As I've discussed some with Elizabeth, I think rather than having a resolution that we would pass on to South Burlington's legislators and also on to the Vermont School Board Association expressing our views, we were thinking essentially to use this, I guess we've called it a white paper, this paper, and pass that on, which kind of lays out what our views are and upfront lays forth some of the proposals that we have that we hope can be considered in this next legislative session and also can guide us as we're dealing with these various funding issues. So there's been some changes, nothing significant since what was sent out last week. I did, for instance, I caught actually fairly significant error where I was suggesting that the general fund should cover sixty-one percent instead of thirty-nine percent of the education fund revenue. And that figure of thirty-nine percent, that reflects what it was in two thousand and five. It was, it's when it really started changing the percentage that was covered. But in any event, I was hoping that I could get any more input from everybody. I can incorporate the input, and then we can essentially finalize this for distribution this coming Wednesday if that, unless there's not much that we have to change between now and then.
And if I could make a couple of comments too. Martin and I had a chance to work a little bit on this together, and what we attempted to do with largely Martin doing the work part of it was summarize kind of the two broad areas, which were really ideas for obtaining immediate or near-term relief for property taxpayers, and then secondarily to look a little bit longer term at reform of the delivery system itself. You know, based on my participation in the summit a couple of weeks ago, these ideas are clearly not comprehensive, but I think the goal would be to reflect the, our school board's thinking to our local legislators and to provide them with some guardrails as they go into the opening session in January around where some of the SB priorities are. So if you think about it, there may be, there may be many more ideas. There certainly are at the state level. They may not be the same priorities within different districts of supervisory unions. So I think this document should really reflect our board's thinking and our board's direction on behalf of taxpayers to our legislators as they go into open session.
And just a couple other quick items. One is that my understanding is that there's a group that Speaker of the House has convened and probably also in the administration of Governor Shumlin where there will be some form of proposal at the beginning of this legislative session. And I was hoping something like this could inform whatever that is, and we don't know what it is, but it's laying out some of our viewpoints. And perhaps maybe we should, what we should do is just walk through this and if there are comments. I know Dan had some comments, and I unfortunately forgot to bring the version that you had your comments on, but some of them I tried to address. Oh, you do have? Yeah. And one other precursor on this is that this really is focusing on cost and funding, and it's taken as a given that we expect and want the educational system to continue to provide excellent education to the students. So it doesn't go into that qualitative aspect as much. We believe that we have a very good product now. We believe that funding challenges and cost challenges are challenging that ability to continue to deliver that very good product, and that's why we're focusing on the funding and cost issues. Any event, all right, should we kind of walk through what the basic ideas are? People have input on where we are right now?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So we have this broken down where we talk about costs, and then we also talk about revenues. And in the discussion of costs, there are a lot of different factors that kind of get wrapped up in that discussion, such as consolidation, such as changes to collective bargaining. But with respect to costs, we've laid out that there are really three main areas that costs can be contained, one of them being holding constant or reducing salaries of teachers and staff, the other is reducing or holding constant benefit costs such as health care, and the third is reduction of numbers of teachers and staff. About eighty percent of the costs of providing the education are in salaries and benefits of staff and teachers, so that's really a focus, although we do suggest, make some suggestions regarding the other twenty percent administrative costs, maintenance costs, et cetera. But with respect to costs, we talk about salaries, and we make a point that statewide, the average salary in Vermont is lower than most other states in New England. So statewide, it's not necessarily the place where one can find a lot of savings. But South Burlington, we believe that that is one area that it's possible that savings can be had because we do have a much higher average pay than the rest of Vermont. And in fact, I think we, we tried in this most recent negotiation to hold that in check somewhat. I won't go into those details of how we did that, but what ended up, where we ended up was having a strike that lasted five days, if you count the Friday and the Saturday. And we managed to have a lower increase in pay than many of the surrounding school districts in Chittenden County and less certainly than what the teachers had asked for, but it's still eight percent additional salary over the next three years. A lot of that going into step increases, which pays for additional experience in education, but some of it also going to the base salary. So in any event, what we've talked about with respect to salary, and this probably does also pertain to benefits and other cost areas, is how collective bargaining seems to us, and I think it is statewide as well, that the bargaining table is really skewed against school boards. And we believe that there are some alternatives and some options for modifying the collective bargaining process that will make the table a little bit more even between school boards and the teachers' associations. And we've made some suggestions regarding fact finding and what fact finders should look at is one of the primary areas that we talk about. But there is also push that we are expecting to see in the legislature for having binding arbitration or mandating binding arbitration in lieu of strikes or imposition of contract terms. Right now, the association and the school board can agree to go into binding arbitration that is provided for in the labor laws that are associated with teacher negotiations, but it's not mandated, and we believe there will be a push for that. And we are opposed for that, and we do lay out why we're opposed to having binding arbitration. Among the reasons are that we believe if it follows the guidelines that are already in place for arbitration that is taken by choice, that it's going to just perpetuate the status quo. It's not going to look at creative solutions. It's going to just have increases in salary and benefits, march and lockstep with all the surrounding communities, looking at comparables and such. So that's one of the reasons we were opposed to binding arbitration, or at least that's my understanding. But I will stop there, because I'm not sure that we've all talked about, you know, this is a position that I understand, that I've proposed, that I kind of have understood would be our position, but certainly would like to understand if that's where we should be going with respect to that issue.
So where do you want to, do you want to, I'm trying to kind of find a cutoff on the page here that you want to provide feedback on. Should we stop at page four after fact finding, or through the proposal on page five?
Let's see.
Because this goes actually on quite a ways, Martin.
Yeah, let's see. We do talk about binding arbitration on page three, and we talk about, that's where we talk about the disadvantages of binding arbitration and why we do not believe that that should be mandated.
So maybe the discussion should focus on binding arbitration and then fact finding and kind of close at the proposal that's on the top of page five?
Yeah.
Is that fair?
Yes.
So why don't we stop it there, and then we'll kind of keep going on other collective bargaining reform suggestions? Feedback from the rest of the board on those areas?
Can I just ask a question first? Just so, on your second paragraph in page three, it's, we really had a three-day strike, did we not?
Well, the Friday, though it was.
It was a scheduled day off.
It was a scheduled day off, and there were sports on both Friday and Saturday. And arguably, I mean, there were coaches who were striking, who were not attending to those.
And I believe it was actually reported as a five-day strike, but wasn't it, David, and?
I'm not sure. I, it's a little bit of a.
I believe it was reported in.
Yeah, that's how I called it. It was because.
Based on curriculars.
There were supposed to be association members at work coaching, and they were on strike. So that's how I counted the five days.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly not wrong.
I have a point of clarification. I think it's at the top of your page four. You're up there where it says, Chapter Fifty-Seven. It goes on to say relating to binding interest arbitration. I don't understand what that means.
Yeah, I think it's a term of art. I mean, that's what it's called in the statute. Good question. I don't really know what the answer is off the top of my head of what.
That's the way the statute reads, binding interest arbitration?
I do believe that is, yeah. Let me confirm.
That's fine. If that's just quoting the thing, that's fine. It's just I have no idea what it means.
I think it's a term of art. I'm sure there's some meaning to it, but unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to elucidate that.
Other comments or questions or clarification?
I kind of like the, we're doing this section right now. I kind of like the tenor of this section, and it's certainly something that I can resonate with. There are some of the explanations that get a little bit long, but I think that's a necessity. I think they're complicated enough that if you're serious about looking into it, you have to take the effort to read it and make sure that it's, that you understand what the point, what the point is that's being made and why we came to the conclusion we came to. But in general, I can support this.
Yeah, and I'm just confirming, it's binding interest arbitration.
Yeah. Interesting terminology.
This is just sort of a general comment, and I agree with Dan on this section, but training of fact finders, how does, does anybody know how that occurs? And, you know, when we say the scope is really narrow and they're not like going broad enough, even though it allows you to look at comparables that are sort of beyond, how do you, does one go about sort of orienting fact finders to any kind of new, I'm just kind of interested in what would happen if we were able to kind of get beyond this narrow scope? How do they become aware of that? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know what the answer to that. I mean, my understanding is that the fact finders, I don't know if it's required, I don't think it is, but generally have mediation training, are generally drawn from mediators who get lots of training. But that's different than looking at the list of factors that they apply.
Right.
It seems as much as anything as it's, they look at precedent. They look at what other fact finders have said and what has been developed.
Right. And how can, can we kind of get them beyond that, I guess, is?
Well, I mean, that's what I would hope is that the guidelines can be tightened and it can, the guidelines suggest, well, actually, I mean, for fact finding, there are no guidelines. And fact finders, they look elsewhere, and one of the places they do look is the section in the law regarding binding interest arbitration. And that's where that list comes from that we see in fact finding. And there, and it's not a list that they are required, an arbitrator is required to look at, but it's a list, I mean, there's, arbitrator shall give weight to these factors. And that language could perhaps be strengthened, that they must look at these different factors, and the factors could be adjusted. As we propose, we suggest some things that make it focused more on the economic ability and willingness of the community to pay, not just what other communities are paying, and not just whether a budget has passed or not.
Well, I think we're also talking about, the proposals in here are, any of these we can certainly try to, or, you know, or implement at a local level, but the, these are guidelines for our legislators. So I think we're specifically suggesting that there might be some legislative action that would provide specific guidelines, that would provide a platform for thorough consideration of creative proposals, so something that is more specific than what currently exists today. And again, I think, I think we have practiced this ourselves locally, but this is our effort to really provide some direction to the legislature. Dan, I'm sorry, you have a question or comment?
No, I'm okay.
So are people comfortable with, through the proposal on page five? Well, I guess we'll make a decision at the end on an action on the whole document. So Martin, do you want to go through other disadvantages?
Yeah, the other disadvantages focuses on a couple areas. One, it's really looking at the negotiating process and how oftentimes boards, and certainly we have been doing this, end up negotiating into the next period of time where there's not a contract. I mean, there is a contract. What happens is the previous year's contract terms go over to the next year. So we usually are negotiating, many other boards, I understand, do this as well, after the contract has expired. And that contract that has expired, most contracts automatically provide additional money to the teachers in the form of their step increases and such. Also, what can happen is if there ends up being impasse to the extent that the board decides to impose the contract terms, the board can only do that for a one-year term. And often, you're already into a school year and would be imposing just for the rest of that school year. So it decreases the bargaining position in some respect of school boards, both of those items. And that goes to the balancing of the table, the bargaining table. So the proposals that I, we put forward here is one that, that contracts should not include, or the terms that go over to the next year after a contract is expired should not allow any increases in salary until there's a new agreement put into place. I know that a number of years ago, we imposed on that very issue, and I, for one, actually I was opposed to that imposition on that particular issue. And I still have some mixed feelings about it, but one of my biggest issues back then was I felt that South Burlington by itself shouldn't be trying to do this. And if it was something that was going to happen at a state level, that was a little bit different, at least to me. I still frankly have some qualms about that one, but I know that the board is interested in looking at that, and I could go along with that. The impasse part of it is providing the board with, the proposal is to provide the board or boards with the authority to impose for more than one year. Could it be two years? Could it be three years? I'm not sure. But at least a multi-year contract, at least two years minimum, just to, in part, I think to buy some certainty, at least for a longer period than just a few months that a board could impose. But it also gives, I think, the board a little bit better bargaining position. So that's kind of my view on those proposals and that aspect of this paper. If anybody has issues.
I have some reservations about the imposing a multi-year contract. I just, yeah, that's all I'll say at this moment.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, from my standpoint, I think, I have, I was going to say similar. I don't know your specific reservations. I have some reservations, but it's not, it's largely driven by the fact that we could, we could be eleven months into a current year contract and before we settled, and that has happened in the past in my tenure. So I might, you know, consider looking at this and saying, I think it's implied in here, Martin, but saying up to two years or something to, or up to, up to a year beyond the current settled contract, something, something that addresses the timing issue of if you're eleven months into a school year without a contract and then you settle or impose, you in essence have one month left of that. So to me, it should, the impetus, impetus of this in my mind is to provide a material amount of time that rebalances bargaining at the table, but also addresses the fact that a significant amount of time has expired during which, if there's no action taken on the former proposal, taxpayers are funding not only step increases, which could be a significant part of salary increases, against an existing budget that may or may not cover that, but there also are no concessions on things, benefits like health care, for instance, where there might have been an offsetting, you know, upside or downside for the district or for the association. So I look at that, I look at the first part of really addressing committing taxpayer resources in the absence of a settled agreement in a current budget year, so really dealing with the full amount of funding that's available in a bargaining situation. And the second part, addressing a timing issue, so saying maybe up to, you know, up to twelve months or up to a year following settlement of a current contract, something to that effect. So it could be multi-year if you're, if you settle a two-year, but this really, this is addressing an impasse situation. So I'm having a hard time imagining it going much beyond two years. I would, I could envision it being, you might be ten months into a current year, you reach impasse, and at least you get another fourteen months of.
So just to help me understand this a bit, with the situation it is now, as it is now, if there were no contract agreement and you were in the fourteenth month, is that possible? And if you're in the, and does that, and does that mean that there's a second year of step increases?
That's a good question.
I believe yes.
Yeah, I believe that would be the case.
Under the current contract, under the contract that they were under.
So in principle, this contract with the step increases could go on forever?
Well, I'm aware of SUs or districts within the state who have had unsettled contracts for more than a twelve-month period. So I believe the step increase would still be in effect because that follows a school year. It's another year of experience or education.
If there's no new contract, isn't it status quo? Doesn't it sit at last year's contract?
Step increases, I think, would apply, but no base.
Step increases would still apply though, because they're time dependent.
Step increases in current benefits programs with their, with their carry-along cost implications, okay? It's, it's really pretty, pretty disadvantageous. I mean, there isn't much left for the board to talk about, okay?
Well, that's why I'm suggesting a twelve-month period after.
So I'm just, I'm just suggesting that if it's going to be twelve months after, it needs to be twelve months after some kind of a sliding, some kind of a date that could slide past the ten months that you were saying could go into.
Well, and that's.
I see no theoretical reason why it couldn't go into fourteen, fifteen, eighteen months, okay? In which case, it would then be, you have, we have to think about where that reference point should be put to put the time limit in place for, that's all. That's what I was fishing around for.
Is there some verbiage in that proposal that would address, because I do think the level of detail we're talking about is specific to different scenarios. Is there, is there language, Martin, that could address, I mean, you're in essence saying it with imposing multi-year, but the issue is not the specific authority to impose three or four years of contract terms. It's really to address the issue of having information that you can budget year to year, but also, you know, providing for continuing operations.
Right, and I think that one way to address it is just to say that boards should have the authority to impose contract terms for up to two years. And I don't know how much we have to get into the explanation of that we would understand a scenario where you already have lost ten months of a contract and therefore you want to go to.
I do think that does address the issue because the imposition authority would reside with the board, so it really would be up to the board to make that decision at ten months or eleven months or fourteen months.
And I also.
I mean, to me, the most salient part of this thing is to have some certainty in budgeting. And the difficulty is, is that we already know that if you're past the November time period, you can't budget for the following year very effectively anyway. So if it does go ten months, you have an uncertain budget for that upcoming fiscal year. You don't really know where you are.
Yeah, I can, I can understand what you're saying, Elizabeth, about, about the planning and the contract and the timing issue, but I do think there's an element of school climate here that we need to consider. And I don't, I think imposing a contract in itself is somewhat disruptive, and I think that doing it for multi-years, I'm just not sure, I don't necessarily agree with that language either or feel comfortable with it.
You don't have to do it. This allows it to happen.
Still, I think what Julie's saying, you know, the morale, it's hard enough when, if you have to, you know, if there's an imposition for a one-year period, but longer than that. I mean, I think agreements are best, are, when there's, when they're achieved by good faith bargaining by both sides at the table, and I think the thought of imposing a contract beyond a year, I think it could affect morale, climate, like Julie said. I'm just not sure that I would be able to support that.
Well, and, no, I agree with what you're saying, but that, but that seems to be going more to the issue of whether you would impose a contract at all. And I just kind of look back, and the board has imposed a contract, and if I was there again today, I would vote against. And if I was there again today, I would vote against that. Because I mean, I just, I haven't changed my mind about having voted the right way then. And I, I would find it to have to be extreme circumstances for me to ever want to impose. But if I am gonna impose, I, I want it to, to have some meaning. I don't want it to be for two months left of a school year. You know, and, and I think that giving that ability does not mean that this is an endorsement of imposition. It, it's, it's strengthening that tool. I, I would find it very hard to think of a scenario where I would want to impose a contract, but at least this strengthens the tool. I also think though, that with respect to the first part of this, the no benefit increases without an agreement will also probably serve to make sure that we either come to complete loggerheads or we come to an agreement by the beginning of the school year. I think with, with having that extra incentive that, you know, the school year's gonna start and people are not gonna be getting their step increases, that we will be negotiating through August if need be. So I think that actually works kind of on the timing side of how negotiations work as well, not having negotiations continue into the new school year. So I think actually both of these working together help us to ensure that we have a contract in place or have come to complete disagreement by the beginning of the school year.
What, what you're saying, I'm just wondering then, is the first one enough to make the steps, you know, no automatic steps if there's no agreement? Is that enough then, rather than worrying about the second part here? I just.
Well, remember, this is, this is intended to be, again, guardrails to the legislature to consider. Because right now, by law, a board can only impose for a year. So however far in you are into the year.
For the remainder of the current year, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah, the year that you're in. So, you know, believe me, I, I made a decision years ago to vote to impose. And that was a really, really difficult decision. I believe it was the best decision at the time. And, you know, fortunately, we did not have to go forward on that. But I will say, if we, you know, if we were in November, to Dan's point, if we were in November of a current year and with good faith bargaining, and, you know, we do know our timeline does limit, you know, the board continues to meet during the summer months, but the association has typically not been available. So this might put some incentives around really working year-round to reach an agreement as well. But I don't think, I, I think expanding the, we're basically expanding the authority by a year or, or making that recommendation to expand what is one year to up to two years. I don't think, I, I mean, I do concur with all my colleagues that that's not a path I would want to go down. But, you know, Julie, when you speak to the, the climate, you know, one of the goals, one of our primary goal is to, is to maintain operations, to provide education to kids. And boards do not have an equivalent element at the bargaining table to a strike. And the strike is work stoppage. And even an imposition does not guarantee operations will resume. So I, I do agree, you know, with Martin, that I think the combination provides a little more rebalancing. I would hope that it's nothing, you know, boards have to use.
I, I guess I'll, I'll just be really clear, I wouldn't support it with that piece. Because, you know, as you said, you know, it, it takes extreme circumstances to consider imposing for one year. And I'm not comfortable adding multi-year to that, so I, I couldn't support that, so.
Okay.
So on, on items that, that we've got some, are, are now, are, is, are people agreeing with the first bullet point proposal? So what would you propose? Should we take a vote on items that are, there's been some discussion about?
I, I mean, I prefer to see where we are and, and that this.
Just keep going through the whole thing.
Well, that, that we reach this by consensus. I mean, I, I think rather than, I mean, because I, I don't think, I don't think these items, these items that we're talking about right now are, are the critical ones that we have here either. And we can return to this, again, I wanted to have kind of more of this discussion. Because I'm still unsettled myself regarding the, the automatic step increases.
And, and our goal of this document, again, as I said at the start, was to present a position of the S, South Burlington Board to our legislators. So I think you make a good point about reaching consensus on all these items.
Yeah. I, my inclination almost right now is to strike this section of other disadvantages and those two proposals. And, and I will just, I will address one of the things that Dan said about budgeting and understanding what you're budgeting for in step increases and such. I, I believe, I still believe that, that when we hire a teacher, we are making a commitment. Until we've changed our salary structure and how we're paying, we're making a commitment to a teacher that as they do what they're supposed to do and they move on the, the salary schedule, they get more education, they get more experience. That we've made the commitment that we're gonna be giving them the additional pay. And that should be built into any kind of budgeting that we're looking out on. And we know what those step increases are, unless we're changing the salary schedule like we did this past year where we've, we've changed the index sum. But my view is that we can and do know the money that we have to put on, on the table for, for step increases. So, so I, I would suggest that we just, I, I know people can disagree with that, but I would suggest we strike this bit of it and just stick with what we have regarding the fact finding is where I would come out on this. At least right now, we can talk further, I can be convinced otherwise, but.
I think I'm more in alignment now with what you're reasoning for the, that first proposal, and I would agree with that. So I think tabling this right now makes sense.
A bit about other disadvantages in those two proposals.
Dan, Julie?
Yeah, I, I have to say, I like the, I like the first proposal there. Because I think it inspires collaboration and us to get to an agreement.
That, that is a positive.
And I think there's, there's often been a hiatus when we should be working at, at it. And I just think that addresses that issue.
Dan?
That's a good point.
I don't see many other places in here where we're doing anything to strengthen our bargaining power. So, you know, with the idea, it's, I think it was an effort to try to do that, try to look at some of the difficulties and try to do some of the things there. I'd like to see something like this stay in, but it's not a showstopper to me if it goes out, in terms of the total package.
Well, let me see if I can, I, I, I understand that the imposition bit is out. Let me just ask Diane though, and if, if we were, if I was to try to craft something for that one that would take into account the scenario where we're 10 months into a contract. So imposing is essentially just doing two months' worth. I mean, in that scenario, would you agree that, that it could go to the next contract year as well for the board to impose? So it's not really two years, it's, it's a year and two months or whatever.
Again, I think the one year already, that, that's an extreme situation. And I just would not, I would not be a supporter of adding anything to any language that can, increases the ability beyond one year. I mean, I think that's already an extreme circumstance.
So let me, let me just think this about this a little bit. If, if there was an imposition at, say, month 10, and you enter into the new contract and you still don't have a contract going into the next year. So you entered a new school year without a contract, and now you continue to go on and you go another 10 months. And you impose another one, is that a better situation? And you could end up there, okay? Because I mean, once you do that first imposition, you've gotten through this difficult part, this really difficult part. And things are gonna get, I think, at that point, you know, testier than they normally get, okay? So I'm just wondering, and some of these are theoretical arguments, and not something that you would expect. But I'm just trying to play this thing out as to where it could go in a, in a very, very difficult situation for everybody. But, you know, I'm just wondering whether that's a worse situation or not.
I think.
Because by the time you've gotten to 10 months, there can't be a whole lot of agreement going on, okay?
Being back at the bargaining table doesn't impact the morale of, like, in the same way that imposing working conditions for an additional year would do. I just, I, I mean, think about the impact it has doing it for one year. And I just can't imagine a scenario where doing it for a second year. I just, I just, I can't.
I can actually, I can imagine your scenario of being at 10 months and then having another year imposition. But what I object to really here is the language of multi-years. So.
Yeah, I think it should have bounds. If it's gonna do it, if it's gonna be there, it needs a bound, it needs a sensible, reasonable bound. And from what I've heard too, it's probably as far as anybody would be willing to go. But, but maybe it's, you know, and if, and if, and if you don't do that, then I don't know why you would do that at all. I mean, if you don't go to two years, I don't know why you would do this at all, this, this particular proposal.
I, I just think, you know, you're saying, not only are we imposing this past year that we're in, we're gonna impose another year. And I just, I can't imagine how, what that would do to a school and, and the climate.
Well, see, I, I think it would, what you're, what you're getting in that is you are getting some certainty. And the certainty is one or two things that will happen. You either have a strike, which seems highly likely, or I mean, highly likely actually if there's an imposition. Or you get, such as they've had in Winuski, the teachers continue on and, and, and they work. And in this situation, if you just have like the two months or four months, whatever, well, then you're back at it again. But if you're able to say, well, for the next 14 months, these are the terms, then one or two things happens. They accept it and, and you have 14 months to work on the next agreement. Or they go on strike and something else is gonna end up at the end of the day anyway. So it, it just seems that, and I guess the other, a question I would have though is that the scenario we're talking about, if, if you impose for two months and then you have your next contract term start, do you have to go through all the steps in the negotiating process before you can impose again? Or can you just on July 1st impose for the coming year? And I, that's something we'd probably have to ask.
I don't know.
Get some guidance on.
You'd have to ask on that.
Because if that's the situation, it's not as big of a deal. And if we can just turn around and, and two months later, a board can turn around and, and impose for the coming year. But I don't think that that's how it works.
So it sounds like a follow-up would be, we can check on that. And if you want to take a pass, Martin, add some alternative language that takes multi-year out, but puts a scenario in that the whole board can react to Wednesday.
Okay.
I do want to weigh in on the first proposal from my standpoint. I do think that is valuable to keep that in. And we may, you know, want to table that for Wednesday discussion as well. I really, I understand your point about when we hire a teacher, we make a commitment. But we also have experience talking about the current salary grid. And with the changes that are really happening with student learning around proficiency-based graduation requirements and personalized learning plans, I do think the stage has been set at the federal and state level for looking at compensation programs that maybe recognize teacher competencies that may, may be linked to more education, may be linked to years of experience, but may not be exclusively linked to those things. So proficiency-based teaching competencies, for instance. I, I don't even know if that's a real term, but I guess my point being that, to me, this element of budgeting and compensation has limited creativity because it's become part of the status quo. So I, I do feel like we should keep that first part of the proposal in and just continue the conversation on the second part. Because I do think that has become a significant disadvantage to, to boards and supervisory unions. So my two cents worth on that.
Okay. I'll posit that as well between now and Wednesday.
Okay.
All right, let's see.
Where's a good place to, any, any additional comments on page five?
I know that we did talk about opening the process, making it more transparent once impasse is reached. But we decided that that really isn't a legislative proposal, but we did include it in here. The area where that would come into play legislatively is with respect to the open meeting laws. And I, I think the open meeting laws provide plenty of room for us to have that transparency.
And that's, that's kind of where, when Martin and I were reviewing this, we really didn't feel like that warranted a specific legislative proposal. Just highlight it as something that is covered under current open meeting law and up to any board or supervisory union to consider.
Can I ask, just getting, based on what you said, Martin, so the, the no pay or benefit increases, how would that be a legislative matter or concern if, if, and without also looking at the other piece that you're recommending about pay structures? So are, are you envisioning that there would be some kind of action? I'm trying to now see how that would.
Well, actually, what, I mean, there's no legislation that goes to that issue right now. It's, it's a Labor Relations Board ruling that finds that the contract terms, including step increases, transfer over to the following year. So it essentially would be language, I don't know where it would go, but it would be a, a law that would essentially overrule or, yeah, overrule what the Labor Relations Board has done, which it can do, which the legislature can do, that would mandate that when a contract expires, the same pay would, would be, or the boards would be obligated to pay the same amount, not, not more. Something to that, you know, that's not very articulate, but, but I, I do believe that this is an area that they could impose a statewide rule.
And Asher, we, is benefit increases the right language or is it benefit changes? Because increase.
Yeah, changes is.
I guess changes.
Need more articulate. Although that, that, the more I think about that, how does that play out? Because if, if the same healthcare is being provided, but it's cost 5% more, is that a benefit change? No, that, that's something we'd still have to cover in the next contract term. Right, okay. I'm just going, what kind of benefit change would we be talking about that?
Well, I thought that in, the increase is sort of relevant to who was, was the question.
Well, I, I, I just don't know that benefit changes to benefits are a holdover from the, an expired contract to the next contract.
Well, by, by way of example, if, if our board had been successful negotiating a change to a different plan with a reduced employee contribution, say employee contributions were at 18% now, and there was an opportunity to offer comparable healthcare coverage with employee contributions at 15%. I'm assuming that would not go into effect.
Well, that would.
That's negotiable.
But that wouldn't be in a.
So that's a.
That wouldn't be a holdover type contract term. I mean, you wouldn't be, unless you're saying.
The holdover is, well, let's use this past year. Employee contributions to healthcare were at 16%. So would that have just stayed at 16?
Yeah, I believe so.
So, it wouldn't have been a benefit increase?
Right. It wouldn't be a change.
You'd probably need both.
I mean, what we're essentially saying, I mean, that the contract, and, and this goes somewhat to Diane's point, that we're saying the contract terms, all the terms of the previous contract, expired contract are in place, except we're saying for, with respect to the, the step increases and, and the experience, you know, the, the grid movement.
Yeah, because we don't, we would not have a choice on, I'm trying to think of any benefit where there's, I mean, everything is more of a cost of living change.
Right.
Because the premiums go up with or without a contract.
Right. And, and I don't think we're in a position where we could say we're not paying an additional five percent increase in the health care in this following year during the period where we don't have a non-expired contract.
So, that one might need some revision.
Yeah, I, I just don't, I mean, I think that benefit changes unless you can, I just don't think there's any terms that I understand that are holdover. I think we added that in, but I don't think we've thought it through exactly.
Thought it through, yeah. Yeah, I think you're right.
What kind of holdover terms there would be. John, are there any? I don't think so.
All right. So, we'll move on to page six on health care.
So, with respect to health care, I think bottom line is that we're saying if there are changes at statewide level with respect to health care, the teachers, the staff should not be exempt from, from any such changes. In other words, if we do go to a single payer system, or something else that's providing more universal access to health care, there shouldn't be an exemption for, for this group of, of Vermonters to, to not have to be part of that.
And this is consistent with the VSBA...
Correct.
...resolution, correct?
Right, yes. Yes.
Comments, questions?
I did have questions. Did you confirm that, that we are likely to be subject to a Cadillac tax? Did you have a chance to confirm that with you?
I didn't confirm. I just, I did the work to understand that it was the Cadillac tax.
We're not sure if it's subject to that or not.
I don't know. We don't know that at this point.
But it sounds like lots...
We're, we're approaching it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Tell me more about that. I, I don't know what that is, Cadillac tax. I don't have a Cadillac tax.
I, I think, my understanding, my understanding is it's, it's the amount, like, if it's twenty-four thousand dollars for the insurance, that, that's considered to be a Cadillac insurance plan. And it, and it will be, the employer, such as us, would have to pay some sort of a tax for providing that high level of insurance. The, the concept behind it is to make individuals be more cognizant of their health care choices. I don't know if that's the exact language I've seen associated with it. But if, if people are being provided with insurance that they don't have to pay deductibles, they, they pay the premium, and everything's taken care of, then they're not necessarily good shoppers for health care, is the concept of the Affordable Care Act.
So, there's a certain threshold beyond which you have to pay this tax?
Correct.
And is it, would it just be the school district, or does the insured, the insured have to assume any of that?
No, it's the employer.
Just the employer?
Well, I wonder if it's, yeah, I think it's the employer.
I think it's the employer.
I think that's right. I don't think there's an increase.
I likened it to the equivalent of the double taxation above the per pupil spending threshold. That's how I thought about it.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's how I had it as well. Which we don't want to get there.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Okay, staffing levels?
So, staffing level, well, first of all, backing up, health care is kind of the second area as far as where we might see cost savings, that being the primary benefit. We didn't really talk about other benefits, but this one seemed to be the primary benefit cost of, of the district, so we focused on that. The third area where we thought there could be savings in cost is reducing the student-staff ratios, or would I say, increasing the student-staff ratio? I guess that would be more students per staff, more students per teacher. Actually, in South Burlington, we are above average as far as the number of students we have per teacher and per staff, but there's probably still room there as well for some improvement. But across the state, is, this is a, a big issue. And this is where we've talked a bit about consolidation being an avenue that I think, in my view at least, you know, there, there's a couple ways that you can approach the staffing levels or teacher level. One is you could mandate class sizes, but I don't think that I would much want the state to be mandating what our class sizes are. I think that's taking too much control from the local level. The other way is for there to be incentives and disincentives for consolidation, so that naturally, schools that have very low number of students per teacher and per staff will hopefully look for efficiencies. And if, if there are instances where that's not happening, or where there's a subsidy, or, you know, subsidizing small schools, for instance, small school payments, that those should be eliminated, and there should be disincentives for these small, small classes, if in fact there are opportunities for them to consolidate or to become more efficient. So, that, that's kind of the background of that. And, and we did have three proposals, one of them phasing out the small school grants. And, and part of the reason for suggesting that is, the small school grants, which is about seven million dollars a year, my understanding, and John can correct me if I'm wrong about this, is that that's money that goes to these small schools, but is not included in the calculation of per pupil cost. Is that...
That's right.
So, so it's, so it's artificially depressed what actually it's costing for these small schools on a per pupil basis. At a minimum, that should be included in that calculation. I didn't put that in here, I think, rather than water it down, we should say, you know, that these should be phased out. The, the second is, proposal is redirect, considering the redirecting of funds from small school grants to support these kind of collaborative programs that would hopefully assist in addressing the staff levels. And the third is, it's kind of somewhat vague, but it's having incentives and disincentives for consolidation. It's, it's somewhat vague in that there are so many different situations from what I understand. And this is kind of somewhat following where the Vermont School Board Association is. And we can come out stronger if we want, certainly. But it is my understanding, though, that different localities have very different situations, and there isn't a one-size-fits-all solution for consolidations. However, there should be a little more firelit under schools to get it done. And that's where we're, we're talking about incentives and then potentially disincentives as well. So, anyway, that's my two cents worth on that one.
So, in my head, there are really two issues, two facets, I guess, of this. There's the staffing level issue, which should apply to all school districts, and I think should encourage maybe not exactly consolidation, but collaboration and seeking ways to better, more efficiently use the resources that districts have with nearby districts, or with statewide districts, or even across the country with today's technology, by should we restrict it to, to Chittenden County or Vermont. There's that issue, which I think should apply to all, and then there's the small school issue, which I'm, this is being approached from the cost standpoint here, somewhere in here, I don't know exactly where it is, but I know this is fun enough focused on that issue right now. But there's this equal education opportunity question that, that I took away from some of the discussions that we've been at some of the later meetings, where the smaller districts have difficulty meeting those things. I think that's a real challenge for them, okay? And I think that, you know, it's maybe worth trying to point out that there are two different facets to this, to this question of, of reducing staff. I think the real challenge here in some cases is how do you reduce staff and not simultaneously reduce the quality of what's being delivered? How do you do that? And I think the only answer potentially to that is consolidation. And one of my worries is that something like this could really detract strongly from any local control over anything, because the, you know, some of these things, the only way they may be practically mandated happen is to be just told that they have to conform to certain constraints. My take on that is that that's going to end up moving resources away from school districts like South Burlington to places that don't have the resources that we have, to help them make them up, okay? That's, that's a concern I have. I mean, those are the two things. Two points I wanted to make is, one, I think there are two facets to this staffing question, one being applicable to all districts, and the other being an opportunity for the smaller ones. And then a separate sort of thing, saying the latter one carries with it, I think, some concerns about what the implications of that might be as to a practical way in which you could realize equivalent educational opportunities in every schoolroom that's at a nominal level, whether it be fifth grade, tenth grade, whatever it might be. So, I'm a little concerned that this comes across as a big school district picking on smaller school districts, okay?
Well, I think, I think Martin addressed on the top of page seven, he does highlight those not providing robust learning opportunities. And even, even that, I think, there, there seems to be some impetus for defining what sort of new required learning opportunities mean anymore. So, even, even that kind of def, a shared understanding and definition of what each student in Vermont will be provided, however, whatever the delivery system is, I think that's under discussion as well. But are you suggesting, Dan, that we, we link these a little bit more? I mean, I think you've got it in the flow of these, it's staffing and consolidation. I also don't think, I mean, one of my comments here is, under your third proposal, I would, I would include, continue to provide incentives for consolidation, including inter, inter-district consolidation, as well as funds for construction and repurposing, because I don't think we want to exclude those kinds of opportunities.
Yeah.
And I think there's sort of an acceleration, I don't know if you use the word accelerate anywhere, but that's a little bit of what we're saying. Some of these consolidation conversations, whether they're within a district or outside, are, are taking a long time. David and I met with the city today, and it was interesting, maybe just anecdotally, speak to, I know my elementary school is now condos in Winuski. And I think you said yours used to be the DMV.
Their school, yeah.
Yeah. But I don't know if anyone else has experiences where their elementary schools, or any of their schools that they attended are, have now been repurposed.
All my schools in Elpea, Michigan were.
What's that?
All my schools in Elpea, Michigan were my elementary school.
Do they exist anymore?
Two of the three don't. Well, see, I, I, this, this area is, I, I'm least pleased with what, what this part is saying, because it's, is a very fairly complicated issue, and there are lots of facets to it, certainly. But, but I guess there, there seem to be subsidies and incentives for staying small. And, and I think there, there are, there seem to be a number of schools that, if they weren't being bolstered, would probably have consolidated already, or would be pushing for that more. And at the same time, these schools might be offering less opportunities for education as well, is what we're, we're found out from at our regional meeting and what Rebecca Holcomb had presented. One thing that's not in here that maybe we should also add, that gets to that latter point, is with respect to school choice, that right now, school choice, they, they say that it's been opened up, but it really hasn't. Because an individual school can deny people, you know, students going elsewhere, and other schools can deny accepting students. And, and the way, of course, it works is that if we do get students, or someplace else gets students from a smaller school, that small school still gets the money for that seat. So, it would seem to me that if there was broader school choice, then, you know, parents who actually have their kids in those local schools could be voting with their feet as far as whether they want to stay in, in a local school that's not providing the educational opportunities, instead of sending them somewhere else down the street. I, I mean, that may, I think probably people were concerned about losing a lot of students. Well, why are they losing a lot of students? It's presumably because they are not providing the same educational opportunities. So, I'm wondering if we should even add something about that in this section, or is it kind of too late in the day for that?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I can definitely...
Other comments or thoughts? Are, are people comfortable with the way, would, would look at crafting something on school choice and including some intra-district and...
Yes, I think it should be included, however.
And, and maybe, maybe we should call out a little more specifically, Dan, to your comments, the, and it might be in school choice, sort of the access and the, the learning opportunity itself.
And, and I would like to get a, let's say, one more time. I'd like to see us put something in that encourages intra-district collaboration short of consolidation.
Mm-hmm.
I think there are both academic and administrative opportunities.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I, I will rework this section somewhat, and, and it's not as clear as it should be, but it's there as far as staffing, staffing levels and educational...
The spirit, the spirit is fine. It's trying to get, trying to get the perspective and, and be inclusive of all the, of all the implications.
Right, right. And, and I think it needs to be really clearly spelled out, that staffing levels, it, it's intertwined with the provision of educational opportunities. And it's not necessarily the case that having more teachers per student is giving you that educational opportunity. It often might not be because it's such a small school. Okay, well, I, I will try to rework that over the next day, since we need to finish this on Wednesday.
All right. Other potential cost savings?
I think that is actually going to, somewhat what Dan is talking about, and I can kind of incorporate that into...
Makes sense.
...the discussion.
So, the next section is on unfunded mandates?
And one change that I did make there, from Dan's suggestion, is Dan had suggested that there didn't really talk about duration of, of a moratorium, and I'm tying that to the legislature actually identifying a way to fund this. Until they've figured out a sustainable funding mechanism for these mandates, they shouldn't be imposing them.
Can you say that again, when you just captured?
Well, one of the things that we're concerned about is, is unfunded mandates, such as that, you know, even though pre-case stipends isn't a very important thing, dual enrollment is, you know, et cetera, I, I don't know about agency fees and employer assessments for subsidizing teacher's health care, those are important, but, but there already is talk about some form of a moratorium, and, and I, we're suggesting that, yes, in fact, these things should not be required until the funding for them has been identified. And maybe that, that's just a matter of the funding is identified, it's the proper...
Yeah, that's good, that's good. Because my concern was that there's a moratorium, it times out, but nothing's done about it.
Right.
You still have the problem, it's just two years later.
Right.
So, and, and related to this thing, and I think it's becoming increasingly apparent, and this ties back to some of the earlier stuff, is that some of these mandated things are carrying with them a requirement for staff, that the education requirements alone might not demand. I don't know how you get your arms around that, but I think it's becoming increasingly clear that one of the reasons why Vermont has the ratios it has is because it has... that one of the reasons why Vermont has the ratios it has is because it has so intertwined some of these, some of these mandated services with the, with the schools in ways that other people don't do it. So you have apples, bananas and pears and maybe even a few vegetables involved in those comparisons, okay?
Right.
So, I just point that out, that, that these things, that these mandated things actually read on the staffing level stuff in some unquantified way, at least, at least I don't, I don't know how to quantify it.
So maybe just point that out, that there's staffing requirements associated with these.
I think that goes along with the public.
Some of those may be easy to identify, some of them may be, you know, not quite so easy to figure out.
Well, I wonder if we should also add something about, uh, about the fact that we're providing so many services that, uh, for, um, social services.
Well, I actually, based on the public assets note we got today, I was thinking that should actually go on page nine when we talk about the Brigham decision.
Okay.
And that, I think that's a good place to consider adding that. So if we move to page eight then, we start with the spending threshold?
Yeah, I didn't put any proposals here because, uh, I, I suppose that we could, the proposal could be, don't change the spending threshold. I mean, that would be what the proposal is. At, at this point, until you've figured out these other things.
Is there a general feeling that we want to provide a proposal if we've made any comments throughout here? Or, or even if it was just in the form of a comment?
I mean, I think, I think there's no harm in saying exactly what you just said.
Yeah.
Leave the, leave it as it is until you can figure out the rest.
That, that is one area that when we went through the draft, there are some areas that we specifically were recommending the legislature not take any action, like binding arbitration, so. So on spending threshold, we'll put a proposal there?
Yep.
The restructuring teacher pay?
I'll let you talk about that one because this is.
Was this mine?
Yeah, I, I think, I think primarily, primarily.
I think, I think this was intended to be an example, which might go actually, where I just made the comments on, um, keeping the sort of other disadvantages on page five. Um, so there, there's no specific proposal here and I think this would be accomplished through collective bargaining at the local level. But, um, it, it was in an effort to sort of point out that there's, there are some restrictions based on the current structure. So maybe this could just go into verbiage, well, I guess I should, we should open it up for comments, but I would think something like this might go into verbiage under, um, page five before we get to the proposal.
Or alternatively, go at the end under additional things to be considered.
Yeah, yeah.
My concern with having it here is that, uh, do we really want the legislature to figure this out and tell us what the answer is? I mean, and isn't that getting awfully close to statewide school board?
Yes. I mean, I thought that something like, not exactly like this, but along these lines was going to be done uh, to get the exemption from the no child left behind. Because that was one of the requirements that was being imposed by the US Department of Education for being exempt from those requirements of annual yearly progress and closing schools and all that good stuff that happens. And Vermont, I thought, would propose something, but it ends up they didn't really follow along. So I was actually thinking, a couple of years ago at least, that there might be movement at the state level and at that time thought that, that was probably the only way it was going to happen. I, I can't imagine how, well, it's going to take a lot of years of collective bargaining to, to modify. I, we, we had a strike and we had a year, three years that we've been trying to move the index and we got, what, from two point zero eight to two point six seven? I, I, I don't know. I, I, what I'm saying is that I don't know, it might have to happen at this stage.
Performance-based graduation requirements is a statewide initiative. So I guess that's, you know, that's where, that's where some of my thoughts are on.
I mean, there could be a legislative guideline that says you need to find some way to represent proficiency in, in the profession, professional proficiency and that sort of thing. Leave it unsaid as to how it's actually done. I mean, that, that could be helpful.
Right.
It would have to have enough in it that, you know, there's some feedback that says, okay, you're also required to come back and tell us how you're complying with that directive, okay? Not necessarily how to do it, but how you did do it, okay?
Well, and there was, there was a change in the licensure laws, correct? So, I mean, there has been some activity, I mean, you know, I would look at this and say, I would look at the professional association and collaboration with school boards and, and students and and the agency of education really kind of coming up with what the framework of this could look like, even if there's not specific dollars associated with it. And, and as I look at it now, I, I guess I would probably say something around proficiencies and compliance and, um, that might go into other iss- additional issues.
Are you saying when, with the pay structures that you would sort of not have this, sort of a step model anymore in years of service?
I, I don't, I don't think it's that specific. I just think it's restrictive, right? It, I mean, to me, this is a little bit of a, um, not a dissimilar conversation to healthcare, which is we're locked into these five by five or six by six or eight by eight grids and they're education and kind of time on earth based. Is that the best structure that reflects how our students are going to be career and college ready on a going forward basis? Is, is it, you know, is, is the proxy of education and time on earth the best, you know, reflection of our, our student learning? But that's really the question.
I mean, and it's a, it's obviously a very big issue nationwide on, on pay structures and getting the right outcomes from the pay structures. And, and our fortunate disadvantage in this area is that we do very well right now. And it, it's kind of like if it's not broke, don't fix it, but, I mean, I think.
It's a disadvantage, but it's not a reason to be stacking them.
That's why I said it was fortunate that we had that kind of a disadvantage. It just, it's harder to, to affect change when we're doing pretty well.
Things are going okay.
Uh, and, and, and that's why, in, in my view, I'm relatively conservative as far as what kind of changes like this we should be trying to make locally. That doesn't mean that there shouldn't be some statewide initiative, be it at the Vermont School Board Association or the Agency of Education, to look at what's been going on, and I, hopefully they are, uh, across the country because now we've had many school districts experimenting with different ways to do this and have a number of years of experience and maybe actually working out where there's some systems that we can learn from. I mean, maybe that's in part where this should be going, maybe not right now, but not legislative, but to the Agency of Education to understand what kind of learning they're doing as far as different pay structures.
I don't, I don't see it as a legislative issue right now. I do see it as contributing to, I mean, again, compensation and benefits are eighty percent of the cost of the delivery system. So to me, it is part of that equation. But I also see our ability to impact it at a local level as being very limited. So this was an opportunity to identify it as an issue that should get some more than local attention.
So, I mean, kind of be looked at as a return on investment and a way to further hone that. Yeah, I, I will drop that to the, kind of the additional point section, is what it sounds like I should be doing for that one.
Okay, so we'll move on to revenues?
So with respect to revenues, the, um, I do some describing of how, uh, the funding of education works. Hopefully I didn't get it too wrong. Did you notice any glaring errors in that, John? Did you have a chance to look at that?
Well, I, I didn't see what you talked about, the transfer from the general fund declined from thirty-nine to thirty-three?
Yeah.
Is that, is that the, those are the corrected numbers?
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, well, that, that, yeah, that's numbers.
From two thousand and five.
Yeah, two thousand and five to two thousand and fourteen, that's what I got from the V S B A.
Right, that's, that's a whole, that's a lot of money, six percent.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, that, that's one of the proposals because I, I think it's kind of lost a little bit in here, but those probably relate, the misuse of education fund, the revenue sources of the education fund. We're getting hit from two different sides. Uh, on the one side, less money is coming from the general taxes. And then on the other side, they're taking out more money from the education funds, which probably should be funded through the general fund, including all the social services that we have to have staff. I mean, we're paying Howard Center to do that, right? I mean, that, that is that, should that be coming out of the education fund? Arguably it could be, but at least it should be transparent.
Do we, do we also get money for that from state Medicaid, don't we? So for some of those social services that we provide, we're also getting reimbursed for too?
Some, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, any event, so one of the proposals is, is to draw more money from the broader taxes. In other words, a transfer from the, the general fund to the education fund, get it back up to where it was before. And, and that's not to say, I mean, my understanding is the general fund transfer, the amount of money going into the education fund has been going up, it's not been going down, but it just hasn't been keeping up. So that's why, in fact, it's, it's funding a smaller percentage. I can't imagine we'll get any traction with that, with the hundred million dollar budget deficit has to be made up, but nevertheless, it would be worth a try. The, the second bit does talk about all the draws from the, uh, education fund that are, don't meet two requirements that, that we're proposing, should be met for the draws to occur. And that is that it should be required by the Brigham decision, original Brigham decision and original legislation that implemented that. Uh, and second, that it's something that the school boards have some control over. So the proposal is that there shouldn't be any of these draws unless it's required from the Brigham decision, Act sixty or Act sixty-eight, and are not controlled by local boards. So that's what we have on those cost issue, revenue issues, I should say.
And this would be the area that, you know, should efforts be made to distinguish, what, you know, what the cost of delivering the, the education system that is covered by the Brigham decision right now versus all other? And I'm specifically referring to human services.
Right.
And largely those are mandate-driven, is my understanding. So they'd fall into kind of the unfunded mandates, but those are years and years of those that have accumulated versus recent mandates.
Right.
I, I do think a distinction would be very helpful to get to, you know, what is the per pupil funding based on the original Brigham decision versus what has become a requirement of a series of mandates, whether they're, you know, all human services related or not.
Right.
And they're probably not all.
So I can add to that, essentially I have a list of various draws from the Ed Fund and I can add something about health services to that list. I don't think it necessarily changes the proposal.
It wouldn't change the proposal, but I think it's, in terms of transparency, I think, I mean, I think we knew this was happening. We just, I, I know, speaking for myself, I know I've described it in the past, that we've even asked our staff to really be delivering social services that they're not trained for in some cases. This would, I think it would be an eye-opener for all districts and S U's to identify what, you know, what they're delivering outside of the Brigham decision.
And I think it would, part of that too, I think, like Martin, you said health services. I think we should also look at, if you're, if you're naming the social services, you know, also name what, what we're getting in funding, like whether is it an E P S D T service and we're drawing down Medicaid funds? So, because there are services that we're providing that we're also getting reimbursement for.
Yeah, if there's.
I think we should know both pieces of that.
Do we get a hundred percent reimbursement on them?
I don't know, but we, there are some services.
It varies, I mean, it varies based on eligibility.
So there's some, there's some reimbursement, but perhaps not full.
But, but regardless of that, I mean, I, I agree with you, Diane. The expense is still outside the education, regardless of where the funding source comes in.
I think that's the main point.
Yeah, it's the net cost.
And that to the proposal is, is removing the draw from the education fund the right idea? I mean, this to me says you have an education fund and you're not going to take that money out of it anymore. I think what you really want is you don't want it in the education fund to begin with.
Right.
So is there a, sort of, is there a way to say that that says that?
Uh, I'm not sure. I mean, I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, this is something that Vermont School Board Association has dealt with as well. And I can kind of.
Maybe they've got better words.
Yeah, I can, I can look, but I believe this is the language, how they put it, but I'll double check. That this is, it's understood this way, but I can double check that.
Well, and I think, I think the way I'm interpreting it is really removing the overdrafts from the education fund. Because it's, you're saying it would get redeployed, like it would get redefined.
I don't think we want a situation where we don't get the money, okay?
Right.
Right.
And this to me says we're not going to ask for it, okay? So I'm saying that's probably not where we want to be. Where we probably want to be is we want to have it identified as a separate thing and so it can be managed separately.
Identified and managed.
Should the school district have a draw out of the, um.
Health and human service area.
Yeah, should, should have a draw out of that too.
Yeah, I guess the way, I, I mean, I look at it is that presumably, uh, the tax department and legislator, legislature, they look at, oh, we're going to need five point eight million and three point eight million and all of these millions of dollars from the education fund. So we're going to add a penny to our base home stand tax rate. So, you know, if they want to remove the money, you know, the seven million dollars or whatever of these non-Brigham-related expenses, and they then reduce the tax rate by a penny, that's great.
From the property stamp, tax standpoint.
Correct.
Not, not, I mean, the money comes from someplace.
Right, well, sure, sure. But it's a transparency issue as well.
But the way I would see it go is that, the way we can do it now is we get a gross budget and we decrement it down for what we call local revenue, which often are not at all local, often federal government title money and things like that. It would just be another line item in there, which says draw from the state. Social services or whatever the right terminology of it is, from that, from that fund. It'd bring down, it would bring down the, it would bring, it would then bring down the, what do we call that?
Well, the, the.
The Act, the Act sixty-eight, the Act sixty-eight expenses would then be reduced. And as a result of that, the per pupil spending would be reduced accordingly, right?
Right.
And I think that's, I think that's the thing we'd like to try set up. I mean, until, and, and part of the difficulty is we give some visibility into what's driving these two things.
Right.
You can manage, you can manage this. Now they get convoluted in a way in which, how do you manage that?
Well, and another step beyond that, Dan, is something that came up, I think I mentioned it at our last meeting, was the idea of linking up some super regions within the state of large districts and S U's with the twelve regions of the, um, uh, human services area, health and human services. And, you know, being able to, because that does represent some efficiency opportunities in terms of delivering services to children, kind of birth to.
And it gives them a tool to understand what they're ma- what they're managing, at least monetarily, so. So anyway, that's, I think we want to set up, I think we want to set up the right connotation so that people think about doing the right, do it, do, if they're going to think about, they think about doing the right thing. They don't end up doing.
So that's, that would be better worded than not required by Brigham. Because sometimes the Brigham, you know, they wanted to provide more equity, right? So in some cases, some of the health and human services things that we put in that box are essential. are essential for learning to occur. So, it's not really a violation of Brigham. It's just, it's in the wrong category. You know what I mean? It's being paid out of these different categories. Because we take it away, and that's not what you're saying. It's, so the way in which it's worded, not required by Brigham, it's required to just, that those pay, you know, in order to ready students. I, I'm not really saying that correctly.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, I think, uh, school districts, I think administrators, they, they look at what they need to do to educate the kids equitably. And, and if health, you know, if social services are part of that, I, I could easily argue that that falls under the category as required by Brigham. And there's also some, there's some amount of local control in how you are providing those services as well. I mean, it's, yes, there's some mandates, and you have to follow certain mandates, but presumably, there's at least some flexibility in, in how we're doing that or some of these things. So, maybe, maybe with respect to the, the human services, it, it doesn't go to that proposal, but it's kind of another bit in here. I'm not sure what the proposal is that would follow from all that, but I think we need to at least highlight.
There has been some work done on the, on the, you know, differentiating between kind of the mandated, required work that we do and then a lot of the other things that have happened over the course of time as far as, you know, these added services, added essential services. And they've, and where they've been funded out of. So, it's been a conversation, there's data on it. I mean, that may be, and again, V S B A may have it, too. I don't think you need to, I don't think we would have to reinvent a lot of it. It's, it's there.
All right, I think I understand. But I will, I will add some language regarding that aspect of it, the human services bit. I'll look at the public assets document a little bit as well to address something.
The public assets, it just came out today, there's an interesting sentence. It says, "But what we need, but what we need a more nuanced accounting that distinguishes education from human services before coming to the conclusion that Vermont spends too much on education."
It's uncannily connected, yeah.
Which I think is their operative statement in that whole.
Yeah.
Paragraph.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it seems to me to be primarily about transparency of how we're spending the education dollars. So, any event, uh, that's the bulk. Then I just added some miscellaneous additional issues that we just didn't look at in depth, because some of them were a little... Well, we're just going to get to them this time. Unless there's a burning desire to, to address any of these right now.
I, I just wondered, Martin, on your question, should be, should there be adjustments to income sensitivity? And that was sort of an open-ended question, and I wondered, like, did you have some thoughts about that?
Dan?
I have thoughts, I have lots of thoughts about it.
Dan, thoughts?
Well, first, I mean, how do I make this short? What I see is the biggest difficulty in it is that it's a, it tries to be a hybrid between income base, an income tax and a, and a property tax. And it's confused in a way in which I think, at least most people I run into have no idea how it really works, okay? So, you have a tax, you're getting taxed for something that you don't know how you even got to that point, which is part of the problem. So, I'd like it to either be a, personally, I'd like it to be an income tax or a property tax, or perhaps an income tax capped by a property, by a property valuation. Something simple, which it's not today. There also happens to be a very peculiar situation right now, which the legislature has called the cliff, which can put you theoretically, not a whole lot of people fall into this category, but if you happen to make eighty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars this year and happen to own property worth three hundred thousand dollars in South Burlington, if your income should go up to ninety thousand dollars the next year, up by one dollar, your property tax will go up by twenty-five hundred dollars. It just seems fundamentally wrong to me that you should be in a situation where you get incrementally taxed more than you, than you actually can accumulate. So, but I, I'm not sure that that's germane to the subject we have in here, because that's how you collect the taxes, and that's not, that's not how you get to the taxes.
One thing you bring up, though, that is germane, is it would be nice to be able to explain school funding in ten words or less. So, I think, I think, you know, reform that makes it, that makes the understanding of funding formula easily understood isn't, that's not a bad goal. I'm not sure we should not say something like that.
But I think some of what we are saying is getting at that.
I think it's getting at it, yeah.
I think, I think the bit about unfunded mandates, I think, uh, the draws from the education fund, I think that the social services, trying to make all, it's all kind of more transparency. I think that's why, you know, it, it seems so confusing that you send a certain amount of money to, to the state house and then you get a certain amount of money back. It, it wouldn't be fairly straightforward if it wasn't being drawn for all these other purposes.
I wonder if we shouldn't put that in the opening statement, that our proposals also address improving transparency and, you know, rendering the funding formula easily explainable.
Well, I would never say that. I wouldn't say go that far, yeah.
Well, no, but.
That would be a good goal, though.
Approaching that.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we're not even getting there, but. And just a quick housekeeping thing, there's a redundant sentence on the back on statewide teachers' contract or school board steering committee.
Oh, yeah, I see that, yeah. Got that, thank you. Okay.
So, any other comments, questions?
Well, I, I like where we're headed. I like, I like the restructuring of the document from the way it was before. I like starting out with the summary and then expanding upon the ideas and then putting specific proposals in. And I, and, let me, I'd like to thank Martin for the effort he's put into this. Without a lot of effort on his part, we couldn't have gotten to this point, definitely.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
We also, we'll probably announce this Wednesday, but we're looking at, uh, presenting whatever we end up approving on Wednesday to the city council on the fifteenth of December. And then we're looking at targeting a legislative breakfast on the seventeenth, where we would have that discussion as well.
What's the fifteenth, fifteenth? Do we have a meeting the fifteenth of December?
You don't have to go. It would be, it's one of the Monday, it's a Monday night, December fifteenth, city council meeting.
Oh, I see, okay.
And this would be just, it would be on their agenda. It would be submitted to them.
That's also just for people to know, that's the jazz band concert on the fifteenth.
It, it would be just, it could be a board member, it could be two of you, you know, just to get it off of.
And what time is that on the fifteenth?
I would say it'd be right off in the very beginning.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it would start at six.
Don't they start at seven?
Six or seven, I'm not positive, but we'll, we'll know more.
Can you email?
I can't get on the internet, so I will email that to you.
Okay. I can probably be there.
So, we're trying to identify kind of venues to get this communicated to all the right parties. All right, any other discussion on our non-resolution?
I just have a couple of things.
Oh, good.
This is great that you put in there, how can the state approve attraction development? It's a section planning for business managers and administrators. I think that what happens is, VASBO has a certification process, but new business managers in these very small districts, they can't go to any of those meetings. I mean, there's this small doing payroll and, and I'm not sure how that translates into legislative action, because a lot of times, the legislature only knows, well, let's make everybody be a C P A or something like that. And that's probably not the answer for some districts, but I appreciate you putting it in there.
Isn't part of the answer with that, um, potential consolidation, where you?
Yeah, it sure is. It would be, yeah. And, and that ties in with standardized human resource systems and accounting systems.
Data sets.
There's four or five of those, but everybody does their own preference or what they can afford, so it's by district. Thank you, that's good. And a catalog health plan, um, the limit on it is twenty-seven thousand dollars per, per year in, in two thousand and eighteen for family coverage and ten thousand two hundred for individuals. So, it's a forty percent excise tax that goes on the.
And what's our current, what's our current family plan?
Uh, you know, I think it's twenty.
Twenty-one?
I'm thinking twenty-three, but I don't have it.
I was thinking twenty-four, but.
Yeah.
So, are we going to get to twenty-seven thousand by two thousand and eighteen?
It's one of these compounding deals, a five percent increase, a five percent increase, it's possible, yeah.
Right.
Is that number you quoted, is that the district share, isn't it total amount?
Total amount.
Okay, unless there's more discussion, we will move on to agenda item four, two point two, treatment of staff.
So, this is, um, you've seen it before, we've had it in front of you. So, um, it's been modification changes marked in yellow. I'm not sure how you want to go through it. This is on there for action.
Do you want to go through, is the board's pleasure to go through the highlighted changes? Are you okay to do that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, why don't we do it that way?
So, again, the last time we did this was in October. And then what we've done is, is, as it came up, it was the nineteenth that we initially had it on there. So, that's the reflection of the date. Six was, we made a, a change there to neglect to provide meaningful and timely performance evaluations, administrators, teachers, and staff. Under the interpretation, then we added teachers' union support staff, district support staff, building administrators, and central office to the interpretation. Under the evidence, we added, and again, you can see what we've added, updated guidelines in employment of relatives, procedures, and performance flow chart. Two was policy number two, or detailed policy number two, disseminate, discriminate against any staff member, non-disruptive expression of dissent. So, this is a shot of interpretation on my part of, of expression of dissent. And then same evidence. Why don't I pause a little here? I'm kind of just reading for you, but I don't know if you have.
Well, should we go back to policy one and see if we're... See if we're, uh...
Yeah, why don't we stop with each policy, yeah. Okay, so with the, with the changes on policy one, is it a reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
I have a, just a quick question on that. Does the board fall anywhere in this, or should it?
I would, uh, good question. I would say no. Your fuzzy staff, right, really? Because you're paid by the district.
Oh, really?
You're also in the, I know, that's why I said fuzzy.
Really?
But you're also in a position of authority.
And we're elected, yeah.
And you're elected, right, yeah.
Although, we are included in the nepotism policy. So, if you look at the attachment, number one, it actually says blah, 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 or, um, following guidelines will be followed when employing, employing relatives of school district employees and board members to create a working environment that's fair, promotes confidentiality, is focused on meeting the district's ends policy.
That probably should be.
Yeah, I don't think you're totally, I don't think you're totally exempt. Some of this could be that, you know, the hiring, if you're the school board, you're hiring the, of a superintendent of, you know, hiring of an individual that's.
Well, this is, this is referencing when employing relatives of school district employees and board members. So, it's relative of a board member.
Doesn't mean that you can't, you know, it provides guidelines, right, for what that, what it is, um, in the position of whether or not you're going to, you know, evaluative. So, if you were employing a relative that was a superintendent, that would be in direct violation of nepotism.
But what about, you know, we, we approve consent agendas for teachers. So, should we recuse ourselves if, if any of our relatives were in those situations? So, I think it wouldn't just be superintendents, it might include others.
So, if it was paid, yeah.
So, what did Ted Menazer do since his daughter worked in the school district?
He did recuse himself on a number of occasions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Things that were related to, you know, salary-related issues.
Elizabeth, where were you thinking, maybe that school board should be added?
I just wondered, under the superintendent's interpretation of rules, rights, and responsibilities, but, um...
Well, it is in there, and that's obviously in, under our guidelines.
Right.
So, I'd like to just make a mechanical suggestion, David.
Yeah.
And that is that a number of these documents, I like the way number one is set up, attachment one is set up, reviewed, accepted by, given a date, reviewed, accepted by, given a date. Some of these others seem to fall into the same category. They don't have dates, they don't have attribution. I would encourage you to try to follow that back.
Help me out, Dan, I'm not following on that.
If you look at attachment one.
Where you have this here.
If you look at the bottom of attachment, page one, on attachment one, you'll see that it's reviewed and accepted by.
Gotcha, mm-hmm, okay, yeah.
Go to, for example, if I find, I haven't written this, I think it's five, five.
Yeah, you're saying to be consistent with every attachment.
Or similar kinds of documents, or policy kind of documents, or procedural kind of documents. I think it's nice to have a rev level with an attribution as to who's responsible for it.
Right, so on those attachments.
That's, I mean, it's not, it's a suggestion, it's how to approve it, it's not an objection to it at this point in the game, because we suspect it's been this way a long time.
Although, I have to say, that's a little alarming to me to see reviewed and accepted by the personnel committee and then reviewed and accepted by you fifteen years later.
Yeah.
That's a little alarming.
Well, it's been revs on the May thirtieth of fourteen.
Right.
The initial one was three twenty-five ninety-nine, then there was a revision.
You just don't know, yeah, what was changed necessarily or added or updated.
Well, there's no, there's nothing that says revisions, it says reviewed.
No, it doesn't, and, you know, we could get an engineer in here to give you some rev control instructions, but.
This is, again, part of what, you know, with Karen coming on board and working with you directly is looking at all of these.
I'm sure Karen knows exactly what I'm talking about.
There's, doesn't mean that, you know, part of, as we continue to look at our contracts.
But it's partly for that observation, that when you look at the thing, you can say, well, isn't this a little outdated?
Yeah, yeah, and we're not, it's part of the reason we put them on there. But I, I understand what you're saying around making sure they're all on there.
I, I think, yeah, I think that these reviews and acceptances and revisions, to Dan's point, would be good, but I think it, it does strike me as odd that there's fifteen years.
Well, then, I mean.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't, listen, I don't.
In our monitoring, we ought to have some, I think it's sort of incumbent upon us, we monitor it. If we see, if we had those dates there, we can then say, well, is this current? Is this really?
Right, I don't, so, I'm not, what I don't know is, I know there was probably other iterations from the time in which it was, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, there's, obviously, there's, there could be a whole lot of other revisions that have happened, but that was the reason for it being on there, you know? And I, I can't tell you exactly the changes that have happened year by year from that time. What I would say, and again, this is part of what needs to drive us, is, um, things like this, guidelines, fall right back into the policy, you know? So, you should be evaluating it as such in, in this monitoring report. It's not adequate.
My comment wasn't to the content, it was a procedural. That's why I said, that's why I prefaced it with mechanical.
So, this is a, this is a, this is a potentially good, um, it's good feedback in the monitoring process that, you know, changes in the future to this are going to happen within this monitoring report. So, this is a positive corrective action to say, when do these things change?
So, where, so where does that get captured? In, in policy governance, where will this get captured?
I think under, you know, you're just, you're just addressing number one in your, when you, when you score it, is there, so maybe the interpretation is right. Is there, is the evidence right, you know? Does it provide enough, right?
Well, it doesn't speak to the.
So, we have a rule.
To primality of the evidence. So, so should we go through and score this one on? So, so should we go through and score this one? On one, then, is the interpretation reasonable? Yes.
Yes.
Is there adequate data?
Yes.
And therefore, by default, is in compliance. So we don't have a mechanism to address an opportunity to improve it.
But you could make comment, in what you just did, right, for the next round, is that we make comment on.
So we've addressed the issue of attachments or evidence being, including revision dates and being timely.
I think there should be a responsible person identifying who it is that's responsible for the maintenance of that document.
I think it needs to be the superintendent.
Well, the HR director may be the right person for some of these, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's a management, that's a management call in my mind.
I think it has to stay with the superintendent under the, because you, you know, who knows what. You're always.
Well, it could be revised by one person and approved by another, I mean, you could be the approver. I think that's for you to figure out, but.
So that'll come back. That will show up in evidence next time. So if we move on to detail policy two. I think David's made some modifications on his interpretation. Does everyone agree that's a reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes. Is the data adequate?
Well, I have an issue with that somewhat. Policy number one, I'll try to make this as snappy as I can. Policy number one talks about the various written personnel rules and such that they've, it's providing that they're supposed to be given to the staff and teachers and such. This policy number two is whether discrimination has in fact occurred. So I don't think you can just point to the manuals and such under policy one and say that you have complied. I mean, I think you have to.
Document it.
Well, I mean, yeah, the easiest way is to say that there are, there were no instances where there was discrimination against a staff member. Is that sufficient, or should there, is there some way that you would track whether such a discrimination has occurred? I mean, is that, would that come out in grievance, would it come out in complaints? How would you know, if you made that statement, that there hasn't been a situation where a staff member has been discriminated against because of non-disruptive expression of dissent? Do you know what I mean?
I know what you mean. I don't, I mean, these are, these are, it's hard to put a specific finger on how you might receive that, you know.
But, I mean, is, is it good, well, the first step would be.
It might not be through agreements, it could be through just somebody, you know, expressing, and then we, then we deal with it.
Right, I guess, I mean, the first step is that you are not aware of any instances of this, presumably. But we have to be satisfied that you, that you would have become aware, that there's something in place sufficient for you to become aware if such an instance did occur, for us to be able to rely.
Well, an alleged instance is not necessarily.
Alleged, yeah, alleged, yeah, whichever.
That's, that's reportable?
Right.
Alleged, yeah.
Well, yeah, I'm, you know, right now, I don't, I mean, I feel we're compliant. Nothing's come to me that indicates that there's this concern. Is it through all areas of communication? It's written in email and voicemail and face-to-face meeting articulation, right, something like that. I think is what you're wanting to know more about. Like, how would I, what, how would I provide you, in other, you know, think about you in that situation? What evidence is available?
Well, I guess.
And I'm just saying, take me, you know, if I said to you, you know. You're the, you're the, how can you tell me that you're, you're dealing with this, you know, that you're.
I have, well, I guess I have two suggestions. I mean, one is that you're not aware, is my understanding, of any such instances. The second is that you in fact then could, I mean, if, if all the policies listed on page two, if those policies make it clear how an individual can report this,
Can report.
Then, then you can, you can tell us that, that all these, that individuals know because they've been provided these rules, or they've been told, that they can report this, and nobody's reported it.
Right.
And I think that would, yeah, well, no, right.
Somebody could have said to, you know, a staff to a staff, could have said, hey, I think I've been discriminated against, right?
So Martin, you're saying that would be better evident, to document the evidence that way than just to put, same as detail policy one?
Right, because this doesn't tell me whether or not there's been any instances.
So.
And I want to be, I want to know if there, whether or not there are any instances, but then the second step of all this is, you know, I want to know that there's a method where if there was an instance, it would come to Dan's attention.
Right, so see policies and procedures as outlined.
Well, it's really the, it's really how the employee or how someone would report it, right? That's what you're saying, Mark?
Yeah, I would, I would think that that would satisfy, if it's clearly laid out to employees on how to report it. And if it is reported, would it come to the superintendent's attention? I think there's two components to that.
So I just want to say we're pushing eight o'clock, and I know we're scheduled until eight, so I wondered if, do folks think we can get through this in the next few minutes, or should we table it till Wednesday? Or is there something else we can accomplish for the next few minutes?
I think we can keep going through this, but I guess the question is, is the data adequate on policy number two?
I think he has to come back with us to have that explanation.
So should we say no, or do you want to take one more pass at it?
It's really up to you. I mean, I don't want to, part of this is you can say no and it comes back that way, or I can bring it back on Wednesday.
So why don't, this has been on the agenda quite a bit, so why don't we do the monitoring report? So we'll say no on that, and therefore, we are not in compliance on detail policy two.
But it, but it also seems to be the kind of thing that can, I mean, he's told us essentially how he would explain that we're in compliance.
So we could say the compliance plan is acceptable?
Mm-hmm, that sounds good.
Or can he, can you bring it back on Wednesday, or the meeting after, and we just have that one issue to look at, and so we can get this.
Yep, they can.
Taken care of.
Yep.
All right, so detail policy three, fail to acquaint staff with their protections under this policy.
So again, we've added information in here in 2014 in the spring to discuss benefits and ideas and conditions of employment. And that's in there in attachment four, that was a change. We've added some things on the, just anyone who drives district vehicles. And again, I would report compliance.
So is the interpretation reasonable?
Yes.
Yes.
And adequate data?
Yes.
Yes.
So we are in compliance. So number four, allow staff to be unprepared to deal with emergency situations?
So under evidence, what's changed is that, again, crisis team members are still being provided periodic information. We do that through, you know, our ongoing meetings and examples of crisis situations are practiced in at each school, and that's in attachment six. So again, the dates and the information is outlined in attachment six.
Reasonable inter, oh, go ahead, Dan.
Well, have, can, have there been any, within this period, incidents that you can report as being handled properly? Just as.
Triggers of incidences. There have been incidences, but they've been all followed in accordance with the plan.
Yeah, well, that would be, to my mind, that would be positive evidence.
Yep.
That they were prepared.
Yeah. Better than. Add that.
In fact, in my mind, better than we told them what to do.
Yeah.
Since you're bringing this back, can you add that statement to this?
All right, so we'll move on to five, fail to create a positive organizational climate conducive to achievement of the ends.
So again, we've added some things in here, this was in part to the last time we met, around some of the things that we're doing as evidence to that. So we have surveys that are in here, growth plan information, some of the HR functions have been added in here.
Could I make a recommendation of some further, an area of further evidence that you may or may not want to include? As far as the fact that the facilities are well-maintained, I think is a pretty important aspect of it being a positive organizational climate.
Yep.
That, that last one too, I think you're just missing a word, a robust EAP and progressive HR supports are in place or something.
Yep.
So on detail five, reasonable interpretation?
Yep.
Yes.
Have adequate data?
Yep.
And compliance? All right, so six is neglect to provide meaningful and timely performance evaluations to administrators, teachers and staff.
So then, again, we've had the performance audit, which you're all familiar with, and there's been, there's a plan in there. Attachment seven indicates that, so provided the evidence to, to those components.
So.
Oh, go ahead.
So one of the things I, I think about being in here in the future is, you know, say 40 evaluations were done or required and 37 were completed, or something, just to kind of document what was done.
We can do that.
Also, with, with respect to your interpretation, in, in the detailed policy, it talks about evaluations to administrators, teachers and staff. And in the interpretation, you say all staff, and it may be a little ambiguous if, when you say all staff, you now are meaning administrators, teachers and staff.
Just to be consistent, you mean, every time, all staff?
Well, well, I'm wondering if you should spell out what all staff.
Maybe one should say all employees and the other instead.
Yeah, instead of just and staff.
Well, no, in the, the policy itself, you list administrators, teachers and staff, and then you just say all staff in the interpretation. And one could think, well, that doesn't mean teachers and administrators, it's just an ambiguity.
Gotcha.
Okay.
I, I did have one quick question, though. When, when will, are we going to get an update on the implementation of the recommendations that we had in the audit? I don't know that that has to be in here, but I'm curious if that's.
Right. Well, we're working on it, we're working on those. You're going to see them, actually, as it comes around.
Yeah, I just wondered.
What I would say, just to clarify, it would be helpful to have, not just for teachers, but the number of, since there are tracking and cycles in place, how many administrator evaluations were due, how many were completed? How many support staff do completed, teachers do completed, just so that's in there, so we kind of get a flavor of that process? If there's a way to kind of get capture that there.
That was, that was kind of a, that was one of the recommendations specific to teachers, if you remember. As far as this, as it relates to performance evaluations, that makes sense.
Well, and my understanding is we have that data, because you know how many have to be completed, so.
Yeah, well, I just, it's not in here in evidence. And in some cases, it's not, it may not be complete based on the time in which this is reported, you know.
Right, I mean, it could be reported as of this date.
Could have the due, but we don't necessarily have the done.
Right. But I think only because in detail policy six, it specifically says administrators, teachers and staff should separate, so.
Yeah, and that, we can clarify the rest of the staff.
So rather than review the overall 2.2 policy, why don't we look for a couple changes on four and six? And, actually, two as well. And then with those changes, we can review the overall policy Wednesday?
Yep.
All right, so we are kind of at time. Do we want to just introduce the budget or hold off on that?
We're, I mean, we're going to have, you know, I gave you the budget timeline last time, last, I mean, and as Elizabeth said earlier, we had a meeting today with the city, we're trying to get all of their dates along with our dates kind of onto one sheet. There's a desire, you know, to have some things together, some information sharing together, so we're going to, we'll coordinate that. I don't have that done yet. We just met with them this morning. So I think it's fine, we have, we have more work to do. We have yet to receive state data. We've gotten some, but we haven't, we don't have it all, and it's really important that we have the state data.
Well, we got a little information that was released on the two cent.
Yeah, on the base education amount.
With an expectation that budgets would be about 3.1%, did I see that?
Yeah, yeah. From, we don't, we haven't gotten the tax commissioner's stuff yet. We've kind of gotten a privy to what it, what we think it might be, but we haven't got it yet. So as soon as we have that, which should be, should have been today, we'll be working on that. We met with all of our administrators, we're going to go, the second round will be when we know a little bit more about where we are as a, as a kind of an end run. We've identified, based on our 2020 planning, that we've done this, you know, our forward thinking to get us to where we need to be. We've met with each individual building to identify some of those areas that, where they are and where they need to go, kind of on an incremental basis, year by year. So we will have that information kind of rolled into the timeline for you folks. It's going to be important for you to give me some guidance, however, but pretty hard for you to give me any guidance right now, you know, without kind of the factors in front of you. I pretty much have an idea where I think you probably want to go, but it's going to be important for you to give me some direction. While at the same time, you receive from me the direction around where I'm trying to go with the, where we're trying to go with the district around meeting our ends and meeting our, you know, all of the outlined things that we've talked about earlier on some of the mandates that are out there. So I think it's going to be challenging, but we're all up for the challenge, so anyway.
We did a process of recruiting newer people for the citizens' budget group, and I think we invited around 20 people over the weekend. I've got some good response, so I'll keep you posted.
Great.
I've posted on the website Dan's charts of history, and we're going to select some of those, and Ed Hartman is helping me, for that first meeting, and we'll keep you apprised. Amityan had, had done the basis for the budget back in September, September 23rd, actually, we, but we had no idea what was going to happen with teacher contracts at that time, or the support staff. So the support staff retroactive pays will be this Friday, and we're going to start from scratch on the personnel with accurate numbers. So as far as production goes, that's where we are. A little bit behind where we normally are, but we have good numbers, so.
Thanks, John.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Then we are adjourned. Thank you.